We come to you this evening as humbly as we know how thank you for the blessing you bestow upon us as a city. We ask you to touch those families who've been affected by unexpected tragedies. Plane crashes, ferries that have toppled, avalanches. All of those persons whose lives have been altered because of these events. We ask you to give us the ability to do this job in a fair, just manner. These and all the blessings we ask of that name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigle?
Here.
Dr. Wibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the vivacious meeting, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. Thank you for coming out tonight. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the procedure that we will follow this evening, this is a special moment in the calendar for us, is the city manager is going to make his budget presentation to the city council. So, we're glad you're here to hear that. Before we get to that, though, we have some ceremonial matters which we will handle. And then, once those are done, the manager will make his presentation. And then, we will move to the public hearings. We have a number of them tonight, and then, a couple of regular agenda items. At the conclusion of the formal agenda, that's the printed docket, if any member of the public would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity. But, in order to do that, you must have your name. You must have signed your name on a slip of paper in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. So, the first thing we'll do is go to... We have some young children here from Campustella Elementary School. And this is a special student recognition. And is Ms. Nash Jackson here, Mrs. Nyla Nash Jackson? Would you like to come up? Maybe you could introduce the children for us and give us... We have some gifts for them as well.
Okay. We have five children that participated in the C-Parch this year. And just for your information, C-Parch is an innovative marine robotics program. And it allows a hands-on, minds-on approach for children or to apply the components of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. So, the children will be competing next month in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, in the Nationals with all the middle schoolers and high schoolers. So, I would like to introduce... And can they come up?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
We have gifts for every one of them.
Okay. Come on. This is Zayshan Jones. He's a fifth grader.
Great.
Miracle Benson, fifth grade as well. Imani Beal, also a fifth grader. And Cameron Kane, fifth grader. We have one that is absent, that's Honesty Bynum Collins. She couldn't make it.
Well, thank you for coming down and congratulations on, you know, really terrific achievement on your behalf. So, we're very proud of you and expect and hope that you'll do well, you know, in Hattiesburg. Is that Hattiesburg, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, we have some mace pins. Sheila, you want to come up? And we have a couple of gifts for you as well. Well, again, congratulations. And thank you so much for coming. Amen. Okay, Susan Perry. Susan, I saw you earlier. There you are, together with Courtney Swift on the City of Norfolk's Employee Engagement Committee. This is a proclamation for Public Service Recognition Month. And is Capri Stanley here as well? There you go. Okay, we're all here. All right, the proclamation reads, "Whereas since 1985, the President and Congress has designated the first full week of May as Public Service Recognition Week to honor the men and women who serve America as federal, state, and local government employees. And whereas these men and women contribute significantly to the quality of life for the citizens they serve and their commitment to excellence and diversity of skills, are an invaluable resource for providing the various services expected by our citizens. And whereas public service is a noble calling of a wide variety of challenging and rewarding professions, from diplomacy and environmental protection to local sanitation and public education, all essential to the efficient and effective operation of government. And whereas many of these public servants, including military personnel, law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics, health care professionals, and others, courageously risk their lives each day in service to the community across the United States and around the world. Whereas in celebration of the National Public Service Recognition Week, May 4th through the 10th, the City of Norfolk encourages excellence among public employees and promotes interest in civil service careers by designating the entire month of May as a time to honor its approximately 5,000 public servants who are dedicated to serving as the city's workforce. Now, therefore, I call Frame Mayor of the City of Norfolk to hereby proclaim the month of May 2014 as Public Service Recognition Month. The City of Norfolk can encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of all government employees and to applaud, in particular, the local public servants whose dedication, diligence, and professionalism keep our city a thriving community. Given under my hand this 22nd day of April 2014." Susan, you want to accept this on behalf of the group? And we'd love to hear from Capri or anybody who'd like to say a few things. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate it.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council and City Manager Jones. On behalf of the Norfolk City Employees and the Employee Engagement and Recognition Committee, thank you for this honor. City employees are proud to serve our community and to be members of Team Norfolk. The Employee Engagement and Recognition Committee has worked hard to plan several events in the month of May in honor of Public Service Recognition Week to thank employees for their hard work and dedication throughout the year. Employees look forward to celebrating this special time together with their families and fellow employees. And we thank you again for this recognition.
Great, well, thank you. And thank you for all our loyal city employees and all you do for the community. Appreciate it. Okay, Steve Hawkes. Steve is the Director of Human Services in the City of Norfolk, and he's receiving the proclamation concerning Child Abuse Prevention Month, which we do every year. And you've got some other folks with you.
Yes, sir.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, I call Frame Mayor of the City of Norfolk on behalf of the City Council to hereby proclaim April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the City of Norfolk can call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live." Again, this is given under my hand, this 22nd day of April 2014. Steve, you have some introductions you want to make as well?
Yes, sir.
Please. Thank you.
Mayor Frame, members of council, once again, we thank you for taking time out of your busy agenda for this recognition and this proclamation. Would like to ask Nathaniel Gardner to come forward. Nathaniel is a 14-year-old middle school student at St. Gregory the Great, and he is going to have just a few comments for us.
Sure. We're glad to hear from you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Thank you for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and keeping children's issues on the forefront. My name is Nathaniel, and I am here today on behalf of children everywhere. In the words of Rita Pearson, "Every child needs a champion, someone positive, a role model, someone who encourages them, loves them, nurtures them." Every child wants, no, no, every child needs to belong. Not all children today have these necessities to prosper. Will you be a champion to help remedy this? I want you and the world to know that I am somebody. I deserve an opportunity to thrive. I have things to do, places to go, and people to impress. See, I have dreams, goal, a future. I am no different than any other child. I need someone positive. I need a role model, someone to encourage me, to be loved, to be nurtured, and to belong. It is the community that will help raise me. It is the community that will help set the example. You know it takes a village to raise a child. We look to you for support for those of us who are not yet adults. Our voices have to be heard through you. Every child needs a champion. Will you be a champion?
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you, Nathaniel, for coming down. Appreciate it.
Please stand introduce. This is Dowell Stewart, our Child Protector Program Manager. And Bessie May, who is Nathaniel's mother and also in charge of Prevent Child Abuse Hampton Roads.
Great, well, thank you for coming down. Thank you for bringing this important matter to our attention again. Okay, Mr. Manager, this is the moment in time that the council has set aside for the city manager to present the... His proposed budget for the fiscal year 2015. And after that presentation is over, the budget now belongs to the council, and we will make amendments as we see appropriate.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I will present to you the proposed FY 2015 budget. It's a $1.2 billion financial plan, and it's based on the city's priorities which were established in September 2011. You may recall back in September 2011, the city moved from a set of priorities that were maybe 15 years old to a set of priorities that had goals, objectives, and performance measures attached to them. The cornerstone of those priorities is a well-managed government. In addition to that, we have safe, healthy, and inclusive communities, lifelong learning, environmental sustainability, economic vitality, workforce development, accessibility, mobility, and connectivity as rounding out the six priorities of the city. So, those are the priorities that the council established, and then, the council left up to the administration to establish goals, objectives, and performance measures. And I will say that each individual that works for the city is evaluated in part based on those performance measures that go back up to the objectives, the goals, and the priorities that are set by council. We're trying to stay focused on the why. If we go back, this will be the fourth budget that I present to you. And the first budget that I presented to you was really a blank canvas because it was a number of opportunities that we could have as a city. From that, we went further, and we established the priorities. The council established the priorities. And last year, we had a term of building for the future. And this year, it's really neighbors building neighborhoods. And you'll see that as a theme in my presentation tonight. During the past year, we had discussions throughout the community about what do we see our city as and how do people view the city? And something that came about over and over again is that people are transforming their neighborhoods. So, the concept that people really believe that there's an opportunity for their voice to be heard here in Norfolk resumes hopefully in this budget. The groundwork for a well-managed government is the concept of neighbors building neighborhoods. There were a number of strategies that we've established over the years. And the centerpiece of that is neighbors building neighborhoods, which is really a community engagement process. Along those lines, we've had other strategies such as Healthy Norfolk and Smart Processing. And we have been identified as a resilient city. From bond rating upgrades to our recent identification as an All-America City, which they focused on three programs that we have, neighbors building neighborhoods, the way that we address our veterans as well as our flood mitigation strategies. It actually culminated this past fall in the City of Norfolk being selected as one of 33 cities across the world, not across the state, not across the country, but across the world, identified by the Rockefeller Foundation as 100 resilient cities. So, these strategies are not just getting recognition in our backyard. They're getting recognition across the world. And that's attributable to the council and your establishing the priorities. We're growing as a city. We're thriving as a city. And we are the region's authentic urban experience. With the population increasing, with $1.3 billion in development projects, and our recognition as the financial, the business, the medical, the educational, and the arts and culture center of the region, it's a great time to be in Norfolk. Our ultimate goal for the administration is to deliver to you a well-managed government. And that really means that we're going to be data-driven. We are going to be effective. We're going to be efficient. We're going to be responsible, accountable, inclusive, but most importantly, customer-focused. Over the past three budgets, we have had a number of strategies that are rooted in sound management strategies. For example, last July, the council approved new financial policies. We've rightsized and consolidated departments. We refined service delivery. And we shared services, not only between the departments within the city and organizations across the city, but we even reached out to Chesapeake and Virginia Beach for opportunities for shared services. So, where are we now? FY 15 and beyond. We'll go back to the council retreat this past September, where it was very clear to the administration that the council wanted us to focus on three key areas. One, a well-managed government, keep our financial house in order, and begin addressing compensation issues that have been with us for a while. Also, one of the goals from the council retreat was to provide funding for neighborhoods. It was very clear that in the budget that was approved last year, there weren't dollars set aside for some of the neighborhood plans. And that was something that council strongly suggested or urged the administration to make sure that that was a part of the FY 15 budget. And a focus on education priorities. We came back to the council in January to reaffirm that we were headed down the right path. The guiding principles for this budget, it's not just that we find opportunities to raise taxes or just make cuts. We can't raise taxes and make enough cuts to prosperity. It's really a five-pronged approach that we've been discussing for about a year. That's not only raising revenue, reducing expenditures, becoming more efficient, growing the economy, and also sharing services. So, I'm pleased to tell you that the FY 15 budget is structurally balanced. So, in other words, ongoing revenue matches ongoing expenditures. That's been a challenge for us over the course of the last few years. During our presentation on the financial policies and our recent trip to New York where our bond rating was upgraded, that was a concern that the bond rating agencies had, that while we had financial policies, one of the concerns was this structural imbalance in the budget. So, we had a five-year plan, and we were very... I'm very pleased to tell you tonight that we've been able to accomplish that in year one. And it's really because of an effort across the community. It's not easy to get there, but for us, it's important to have that as a foundation. So, what about the FY 15 budget? It's about $5 million less than the approved FY 14 budget. Much of this results from streamlining operations. We have 34 fewer positions in the entire budget. But, that's not positions that were eliminated just to close a gap. As we went through this process over the course of the last year, we looked for opportunities to provide the same level of service or enhance services with limited resources. One of the guiding principles for this budget also is to not focus just on FY 15, but to focus on FY 15 and FY 16. And that's important because in the past, by just having a focus on one year, you really don't account for what are the actions of one year and how they impact the next year. So, what do I mean by that? If we go back to the FY 12 budget, it was balanced, but it wasn't structurally balanced. We had almost $18 million of expenditures that were not... That were ongoing, that were not matched with ongoing revenue. So, what did that do? So, when we go to the FY 13 outlook, not only do you have to make up for that almost $18 million of ongoing expenditures not matched with ongoing revenue, but you also have additional costs, inflation, healthcare, debt service, retirement. So, that caused us each September to have a discussion about closing a gap, a gap somewhere between $20 and $30 million. Same concept, FY 13, about an $800 million budget, almost $19 million in one-times that weren't matched with ongoing revenue, one-time of revenue that was supposed to support ongoing expenditures. So, when we got to FY 14 outlook, we had the same concept, the same problem with the gap exceeding $20 million. The structurally balanced budget takes away much of that pain in the out-years. I'll tell you right now that with this two-year outlook, we don't have FY 16 balance for you today. That's not something that you'll vote on next month. But, we want to get to the concept that we hope sometime in the next couple of years that we can present to you a two-year budget that is voted on and approved so that we can have that two-year lens. So, what were some of the guiding principles for the FY 15 budget? Well, again, addressing the council's concerns. Eliminate the structural imbalance, as we talked about earlier. Centralize internal functions and strengthen our core operations. Eliminate redundancies and consolidate funding streams so that we can concentrate on effective programs. And more importantly, so that we can concentrate on the needs of the neighborhoods. So, we fund results. The funding strategies are focused on outcomes. The outcomes are aligned with the priorities. And we're holding departments and department heads accountable for the outcomes within their existing budgets. For example, we have an additional focus this year on performance evaluations for the department heads. Not only do we have quarterly financial reports that we can see where departments are from a financial state status, but going forward, we also want to have quarterly performance reports so we can see how we are aligning with our priorities. So, we've hit the reset button. We have focused more on the core missions of departments. The programs and services are measurable, and the departments are accountable for their results. So, some of the major budget balancing strategies, one is cost containment. We started off, and we had this discussion in January, we started off by level funding departments. So, what you received in FY 14 will be what you receive in FY 15. The next step is that we talked with the departments, and we said, "What are your core missions? What are some of the things that you can get out of the business of doing?" And what we did is we had targets, about 1% for each department, in terms of how can you stay with your core mission and still deliver the programs and services that are outlined by the council. Those two strategies alone were worth almost $7 million in savings. In addition, we captured retirement savings. We restructured the debt service payments. And altogether, we had more than $14 million worth of savings strategies. Some departments received partial exemptions from these strategies, police, fire, and the sheriff's office. And some, in Norfolk Public Schools, received a total exemption from this process. So, the Norfolk Public Schools, what was provided by the council in 2014 became their base for 2015 without any 1% reduction or any reduction strategies. I think it's important to note that this council has always supported Norfolk Public Schools. As a matter of fact, if you do an apples-to-apples comparison of Norfolk versus other cities in the region, no one has provided more funding for schools between FY 2008 and FY 15 than this council. If we go back and take a look at FY 14, 2014, the current fiscal year, we have some, I guess, a pot of $378 million. And here, what we're showing you is that there are multiple funding sources related to schools. The three gold coins are the sources that are related to the city. Now, two are very obvious to you. That's the local operating budget, roughly $112 million. And the Construction Technology and Infrastructure Fund, which was established last year, which is a lockbox only for school construction, technology, infrastructure. But also, there's, in this current year, almost $17 million of in-kind services that the city provides, whether it is from recreation parks and open space or other city departments that are paid for by the city, but they don't show up on the school's books. So, the concept is, I realize we can always attempt to do more, but it's very important to start the discussion with a clear picture of how the funding works. In this current fiscal year, our locally-generated revenue grew by about 2.8%, but the contribution to schools was about 7.5% increase. If you go to the proposed budget, again, what we have as a base is a level funding for schools. And I think it's important to note that our locally-generated revenue is projected for FY 15 to decline by 2.4%. But even though our locally-generated revenue is declining by 2.4%, our commitment to schools stays the same. We don't have a funding formula policy like some other jurisdictions. Some other jurisdictions are actually providing less funds, but that's more or less related to a funding formula they have in place. So, as we go back to our strategies for the proposed budget that I'll deliver to you tonight, the partial exemptions occurred for police, fire, and the sheriff's office, total exemptions for Norfolk Public Schools. So, we still had to find opportunities for savings. So, in terms of identifying saving opportunities, we went to each department, and we grouped them. And we talked about, what are some opportunities for us to want to deliver the same level of service without trying to make a budget target that is having someone released because we couldn't make our budget target? And I'll use one great example. We have, you know, police and fire, that they are in the same building, but they have their own separate administrative functions. So, getting two chiefs in the room on a Saturday to discuss, "How can we deliver the same level of service by combining some of these back office", really spearheaded other discussions throughout the administration. So, facilities maintenance, human services, human resources. There are a number of opportunities for us in this proposed budget to, again, deliver the same level of service by having consolidations. The three areas of focus, as I mentioned earlier, the well-managed government, safe, healthy, and inclusive communities, and lifelong learning. I'll go briefly over each one of those. So, under well-managed government, it was very clear. You said, "Let's keep the financial house in order." We have a long... We have an upgrade from the bond rating agency, and we want to keep that. As a part of that discussion, we said that we would achieve a structural balance in the budget within five years. We did it in one. We'd also increase our pay-as-you-go capital funding, and we would fully fund our reserves. So, in terms of reserves, we have a 5% reserve, which has a minimum goal of $40.8 million. Where we're projected to be at June 30 of this year is to be closer to $42 million. And that's some practice this council has had over the last few years of when there's a surplus, taking a portion of that surplus and putting it into reserves, which is exactly the right way to do this. It's one option, one right, correct option because it's a one-time going to a one-time. Our risk management reserve, we're projecting, as of June 30 of this year, to be at the minimum. So, we have a $3 to $5 million goal. As of June 30, we project to be at $3 million. The economic downturn reserve, which has a $3 to $5 million goal, as of June 30, we project to be at the lower limit, which is $3 million. Even with the funding our reserves, which is good news, even with the structurally balanced budget, which is good news, our challenge is, when you start to look at the budget through this two-year lens, is FY 16. If we did nothing else, if you take everything that we're proposing in FY 15, and you annualized it, and you carried it out to 16, where would we be? So, if this were September 2014, and we were having a retreat, I would tell you that the gap would be about $9 million before we added anything. That's not $20 million. That's not $30 million. That's much better news than we've ever had in the past. So, you would say, "Manager, you said it's structurally balanced. How do you already have a gap in 16?" There are going to be additional costs related to annualizing any salary increase. There are additional costs related to benefits, and additional costs related to debt service. As we go forward, I think it's very important for us to have a very brief discussion about our portfolio. Our locally-generated tax, it's about 26% of the revenue, excuse me, that we generate on the local level is associated with real estate. So, the good news is that overall assessments grew for the second year. So, it's 1%, but it's still growth. That's overall. So, the FY 2015 budget that we're proposing for you does not change the real estate tax rate. It keeps it at $115 for $100 of assessed value. But again, overall growth is just 1%. If we go back 30 years and just examine growth in real estate, if we take FY 15 out for just this discussion. So, FY 14, and we go back 30 years, 30-year averages has been 5.5% growth. The 20-year average has been 5% growth. The 10-year average has been 6.6% growth. So, again, while we have overall growth of 1%, So again, while we have overall growth of 1%, that's not close to what we have been accustomed to in terms of 25% of our portfolio. But there's a decline in residential assessment, and that remains a challenge. So even though overall assessments have grown the last two years, this will be the fifth consecutive year of residential assessments declining. So what does that mean? On average, a homeowner's tax bill will go down by $9 in FY15 compared to FY14, because while there's growth in overall assessments, residential is declining for the fifth year. So if we go back to 2010, compare the 2010 bill versus the 2015 bill, on average, the tax bill is down $263. So that puts it into perspective of our challenge. Instead of having a source growing between 5 and 7%, we're growing at about 1%. So when I discuss some of the things that we're doing in the budget and one of the reasons that FY16 will be a challenge, even though FY15 is structurally balanced, is that we rarely have enough resources for all of the requests that are out there. But if the new normal is closer to 1% or 2% growth, then I think it's time for the administration to provide opportunities or some potential solutions to the council in terms of how can we get the overall revenue picture to be more consistent with what we've expected, experienced in the past. The sustainable revenue policy would provide more predictability. Again, we've reduced expenditures, we've become more efficient, we shared services. So maybe a little bit more focus should be on the revenue raising piece and the growing economy piece. So I say that to discuss a little bit about compensation. Compensation reform, we talked with council last year about a strategy called ARM, attracting, retaining, motivating, and developing our employees. While the majority of localities in Hampton Roads have had a comprehensive overview of their compensation plan or compensation reform, the city of Norfolk has not. So it's time, at least, to discuss what are some of our challenges in attracting, retaining, and motivating and developing employees. The driver has been the declining revenue that has led to stagnant employee salaries. We've had a difficulty in attracting and retaining employees. So in 2014, without going outside with a consultant, we used inside staff, and we did a comprehensive review of compensation with our goal, again, of attracting, retaining, motivating, and developing employees. At the retreat, we talked about four areas that we would try to achieve in the FY15 budget. That's a living wage for our employees that fall below the living wage, market adjustments for our employees that are 20%, 6% to 20% out of the market, a 5-5 conversion to align with what's happening across the Commonwealth, and a drop for sworn officers in police and fire. The proposed budget does all four of those. In addition, we are recommending a 2% general wage increase for all general employees and constitutional officers beginning January, and also a January step increase for all police and fire sworn. That would be an element that we had discussed maybe doing in FY16, but we believe that it's the right time to address the general wage increase and the step increase. So the path forward, it's always been a multi-year plan. We never intended to come to council and just recommend one year. We would like to make sure that the revenue is sustainable, with sustainable revenue. We'd like to come back in January 2016 with another 2% general wage increase for the general employees and another step for the sworn police and fire. And then in '27, establish an ongoing salary increase program based on the revenue. So safe, health, and inclusive communities, I'll focus a little bit on neighborhoods and on human capital. If you go to Plan Norfolk 2030, Chapter 5, it discusses enhancing economic vitality, and we have 19 strategic economic development areas. Even within our own capital improvement plan that we'll deliver to you tonight, we have funding for neighborhood plans, Broad Creek, Fairmont Park, South Side, Ward's Corner, and even, and that funding is going to be close to $3.8 million. And we even have funding in the Housing Authority's Conservation and Redevelopment areas where there's more than $1 million for Ocean View. But I believe that if we just focus on those 19 areas in those four areas, we miss a great opportunity. So the vision is to create an environment where people transform their neighborhoods and put all of the neighborhood initiatives under one umbrella. So with this budget, we're proposing creating a Department of Neighborhood Development. It will implement a new service delivery model that focuses on neighborhood collaboration and community problem solving. It would be an advocate for all neighborhoods. As a result of this department, it's a result of consolidations between planning, budget, communications, and technology. And in all of our other consolidations, it's actually providing a higher level of service with less resources. We'll hit the ground running, because I believe leadership is very important, and I can't think of a better leader for this new department than James Rogers. So James currently is our Special Assistant for Community-Based Initiatives and Outreach. I think that's too large of a title, let's just call him the Director, the Director of the Department of Neighborhood Development. So I believe we'll hit the ground running with James. In part, James and his staff will help provide strategies that focus on the fiscal environment. So in other words, we have all of these funding sources, but we really haven't taken a look at these sources in a focus that can help neighborhoods more. What do I mean by that? For instance, we have almost $3 million in prior funding related to neighborhood corridors, gateways, and the neighborhood building neighborhoods funding. We want to present that to the council for an opportunity to be more strategic about how we can target this for specific neighborhoods. Some of these accounts have been around for years. So we're closing the accounts out, putting them in one bucket so that we can be more responsive to all neighborhoods across the city. Same concept with human capital funding. Many times, we typically focus on the general fund, but between the funding that happens in our CDBG, some of the funds within the departments, if we put it all on the table and we start to fund those programs and services that are aligned with the council's priorities, I can guarantee you we'll get a better result. Lifelong learning, it's very easy with lifelong learning, it's partnerships, and it's infusion of quality. Earlier this year, Gary McCollum spoke to the council about the E3 initiative, and Gary eloquently said that we have to change the trajectory of how we're focused on early childhood education. If we're ever going to get a workforce, we need to compete. If we're ever going to get the workforce, we need to compete. And I think that Norfolk is at the forefront of early childhood initiatives, from Norfolk Public Schools to Ready by Five, to the new E3 school in Park Place that Gary spoke of, to even the United for Children initiative in PB Young, where they have the stone soup mentality, where everyone can contribute something for a better outcome. So I do believe that there's a lot of promise throughout the city. School construction, okay, we have the capacity in the capital improvement plan, the five-year capital improvement plan, to build five schools. So in other words, we no longer have to wait. When the city is ready, when the community is ready for the construction of the schools, we have the capacity built in the CIP. So in other words, if we're ready July 1, we could build them all July 1. It takes up capacity as we go forward in the five-year CIP, but the good news is that Camp Estella, Broad Creek, Larchmont, Ocean View, and Camp Allen were ready. We have the capacity in the capital improvement plan to build those schools. Also, based on financing needs, the council established a CTI last year, so this Construction, Technology, and Infrastructure Fund, which was a lockbox only for schools. Because of the financing method that we're going to use, there's about $3 million that will be available June 30 of this year in that fund that we will not need for school construction. That $3 million can be provided to the Norfolk Public Schools for their technology needs. So moving forward, we have work cut out for us. The budget attempts to address numerous concerns across the city. We believe that collaboration in aligning our resources with priorities, it gives us an opportunity to deliver upon the priorities that the council has identified. As I mentioned earlier, it's a $1.2 billion financial plan, and the administration is ready to address the council's questions as it relates to the plan. I believe our future is bright, and we have a great future. Speaking of the future, we have, I think, in front of you, the first cut of the FY16 budget cover. And that was completed by Darrell D.J. Daniels, who's an aspiring artist and a sophomore at Norview High. And Darrell, D.J. is with us tonight, and so I want to thank him for being a future and thought and even helping us get started on the FY16 budget cover. So thank you, D.J.
Thanks for coming down, D.J.
And as always, Mayor, I'd like to thank Team Norfolk. That's not just the employees, but also the residents, and also Sabrina Joy-Hogg, who is an Assistant City Manager, as well as the Budget Director, and her extremely talented staff for putting all this together. So I turn this over to you, Mayor and Council.
Well, thank you, Mr. Jones, for an excellent presentation. The council actually received the budget last evening, and we've had some opportunity to look through it, but we'll have, in the coming days, a greater opportunity to digest it. And we have our first budget discussion with the managers scheduled for next week in our informal session, and then we have a public hearing on the budget scheduled for May 7. So, and then we'll have further budget discussions after that. But congratulations on a great presentation, Marcus, and a proposed budget. It looks like you've done a great deal of good work here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, now, I'm told we can just leave everything right there and then just move right into our agenda items here tonight, so. Mr. Clerk, if you're ready, we'll call public hearing number one then.
Public hearing one scheduled this day on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk, 1992, Chapter 4, Residential Districts, Sections 4-10, 13, 14, 15, and 16, Table 4A, Table of Land Uses, Table 4B, Yard Requirements for Residential Districts, and Section 15-4.2, Design Standards for Parking Areas to Modify Development Criteria for Townhomes and Residential Districts. And by 5-0 vote, the commission recommends approval.
All right. Mr. Robinson, Alton Robinson.
My name is Alton Robinson. My address is 735 West 31st Street. Just like to say that Norfolk has a good government, and we can have a greater government. And the reason I say that is because I look forward to going online and seeing the agenda items as they are posted online, so that I can get a bit of understanding before I come down here and speak. And I run into quite a few citizens, whether it be at the gas station or in the grocery store, and you'd be surprised at the people that are hearing the things and watching this televised council meeting. But it's tough to get the information, and I was just wondering if it could be a little easier. Our council representative, Dr. Wibley, has even asked that it be a little more informative, a little more accessible, because yesterday, which was Monday, the actual agenda was posted like Friday, but only the non-specific was posted. And there's a little link that you could click on, and it'd give you the detailed version of it. Well, yesterday, I could not even click on the link and get the detailed version of it on a Monday. The only time I could get the detailed version of this was Tuesday morning, the day of the council. And, I mean, it's only fair to the citizens who are concerned, who would like to see the agenda items before you all make decisions, to have some inclination of whether you made a good decision for them or not. So I would hope that, because we do have a good government, and I believe that if this would be a little accessible to the citizens of Norfolk a little sooner than it is, then it would give the people an opportunity to really be engaged and be involved in this public hearing process. So I'm just bringing this to the council's attention, and I know it's, just like my looks, a change of attitude. How about that?
Okay, call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain portions of Sections 4-10, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 15-4 in Tables 4A and B of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk, 1992, in order to modify the development standards for townhouses. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Wibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk, 1992, Table 7A, to add trucking terminal as a permitted use within the general industrial zoning district. And by 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
No members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter. So if there are any questions, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain Table 7A of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk in order to allow trucking terminal as a permitted use in the I-3 district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Wibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Public hearing three.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day on the application of the Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance, Sections 2-3, 4-0, Table 4A, and 25-10.2, child daycare centers, daycare homes, and kindergartens, to expand opportunities for daycare homes and residential districts. By 5-0 vote, commission recommends approval. And I have an ordinance to amend and reordain portions of Sections 2-3, 4-0, and 25-10, and Table 4A of the zoning ordinance, to allow daycare home as a permitted use on certain lots in residential zoning districts, and to eliminate certain restrictions on the operation of such facilities. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
I just want to say, I think this is also from the mayor's commission on poverty reduction. Another movement in proof that commissioners have done a great job. So this is very well done.
Aye. Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Wibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Public hearing four.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day on the application of the Salvation Army Crock Center to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk, add Section 11-53 to create the Salvation Army Crock Center Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District, and for a change of zoning to adopt the said district on property generally bounded to the east by Ballantyne Boulevard, to the north and west by East Princess Anne Road, to the south and west by Godfrey Avenue, and to the south by Dogan Street, premises numbered 1401 Ballantyne Boulevard. And by 5-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
And Mr. Troy Brinkley, who is head of the Salvation Army Board here, is here with us to speak to the Crock Center issues, if anyone has any, has his captain, Brett Meredith, who is, these guys have been working, and Michael Schenex, sir, have been working night and day to get the Crock Center open this week. And thank you for coming down. I don't know that we have any questions, but we appreciate all your good work, everything you've done. If you haven't had a chance to go through it, I hope you take a chance this weekend, take the opportunity this weekend. It is absolutely, you know, a game changer. It really is. We've talked about it being something to be sort of transformative, but you will have never, you will never have been in anything quite like it, so, any of that. So thank you for everything you've done.
I have two ordinances, Mr. President, on this. The first is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk, so as to create the Salvation Army Crock Center Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Wibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
I would like to mention that there'll be an event, I guess, Thursday evening to recognize the donors and Mr. Darden, as well as there's a dedication on Friday, ribbon cutting. And then there is a large community day, Friday, and there's a large community day Saturday, and large events Sunday and Saturday night, and so we're looking forward to all of that. So thank you. Okay. Public hearing five, right?
Yes, sir. Public hearing five scheduled this day to hear comments on the conveyance of the parcels known as portions of lots 45, 46, 47, and 48, Block 20, East Ocean View, Platte A, Section 2, and portions of Lot 47 and 48, Block 19, East Ocean View, Platte A, Section 2, in the East Ocean View area of the city, to the Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for Phase 6 and 7 of the East Beach redevelopment plan.
Alton Robinson. Can we get him to get to Alton? No, I thought you.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, Council. My name is Alton Robinson. My address is 735- My address is 735 West 31st Street. Again, I attempted to get a little more information about this agenda item. However, I read the portion that the conveyance must occur in order to record the proposed subdivision platte and to allow East Beach Company to work with a developer to build a townhouse development on these parcels. And I know that these parcels are land. And oftentimes, lands have an address. Because the last time I came and spoke on the issue that was an agenda item that was dealing with a developer was dealing with an address. And this is like the D's record. And I know you all don't answer questions, but I was just wondering, is there an address to this? Because it's like, as a citizen and a concerned citizen, and I know I'm not the only concerned citizen, many people are concerned. And this type of language right here, the platte, lot 45, 46, 47, in order for somebody to really find out and get this information, the first thing I do probably go down to the circuit court and then go into the D's office, find the book, and begin to find out what this is all about. I mean, I don't know, but I do believe that it's a possibility that it may, could have been made a little more simpler than it is right here. But just by an address, you know, and make the information a little more accessible to the citizens a little early. Because we are concerned about our tax dollars now and how the tax dollars are being spent. And, you know, it's election time. We got all sorts of people running for elections and things of that nature. So, we may even wind up getting a whole new council. So, you know, no telling. So, and I'm a concerned citizen. I'm concerned for my children because they may have to live in the city, they may leave the city. I don't know what they're going to do. But I'm a very concerned citizen, and I'm a concerned parent. I'm involved in my children's school. So, I have to be involved in this process, you know? And that's why I come down here often. Sometimes you all see me. Sometimes I disappear and don't come down here for quite some time. But I hope that you all will consider what I'm saying about the information, that it would be not hard language information, and that it would be a little accessible to the citizens of Norfolk. Because I know you all care about the citizens of Norfolk, especially when it's election time.
Paul, is it possible, I mean, our Dropbox, I mean, it's, it really does lay out each thing fairly simple. I know what Terry has said, and I agree. But our Dropbox really does lay out each thing, has different areas you can go at and scroll through, and it has plattes. Is there any way we can post the Dropbox for everyone? I don't think there's anything proprietary in it. Can that just be put online when it comes to us and everybody has an opportunity? And as Mr. Robinson says, not necessarily to see that how we voted, but at least we get input before we vote. Can we do that? Can we, I think that's the simplest way that we were all, the citizens and council, on the same sheet of music. And maybe that's something we should look at.
Yeah, and work towards.
We had asked about that two years ago, and we were told that the infrastructure could not handle the amount of stuff that's being posted. But I thought it was going to be addressed with the new infrastructure, the new website, that it was just going to be something that could be easily linked. They're just PDF documents. They're not loaded. I mean, they're.
Well, why don't we take a couple of minutes and let the manager come back to us next week and talk a little bit about it? Okay?
But at the very least, we still can simplify the captions. And, I mean, we're doing better with it. But I still think we don't, you know, we don't have to totally reinvent this. We just need to make these simple summaries readable and clear. You know, frankly, I know you, we're all talking about the citizens, but I'm a little selfish here. I'd like it a little clearer for me. So, I, you know, I just think it can't be that tough. I mean, I don't think the Dropbox is bad, but let's not use an excuse that infrastructure isn't up to being able to do that. We can still make just a sheet like this clear.
Well, the cover sheets to our Dropbox have all the information that most citizens would want.
So, if you could just do that.
The ordinance language is, I can't understand half of it anyway.
Right.
It's written in Roman, I think. But just those cover sheets explaining, you know, what it is and the financial impact and what words it impacts would be.
All right.
Well, I see that from citizens all the time.
Environmental.
When they ask me for that.
All right. Ellis James. And we'll schedule some time next week. I mean, this is just a debate anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Jones, good job tonight. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place here in our fair city of Norfolk. I thought this would be the appropriate time to call attention to something historically. This city of Norfolk was still fully segregated in 1965. In 1995, we had achieved the status of the, in the top five, most well-desegregated cities in the nation. We were number three, according to Forbes Magazine, and that's no liberal rag. My interest in this, in relation to this item, is that I think it is extremely important that we remind the Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, which has made many good strides. And by the way, Andy, thank you very much for your question and raising the issue just a moment ago. And thank you, Tommy and Dr. Wibley, for your follow-up.
How come they're called by their first name and I'm called Dr. Wibley? It doesn't have anything to do with my age, does it?
No.
Okay. All right, fine.
No, but I'm just a young puppy, and since I haven't, I'm not as experienced as you council members, so I.
You can call me Terry.
The issue of East Beach is extremely important. It is moving ahead and moving well, but I want to be sure that we maintain that sense of community and that it is open to all. The color of money is not black or white. It's green. And development for our city is the main objective, as each of you on the council knows, as does our city manager. And I thought maybe it would be important to just call attention to that as we move forward, because this is going to be a rough couple of years in spite of our move in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Ellis. Okay, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance authorized in the conveyance of the parcels known as portions of lots 45, 46, 47, and 48, Block 20, East Ocean View, Platte A, Section 2, and portions of lots 47 and 48, Block 19, East Ocean View, Platte A, Section 2, in the East Ocean View area of the city, to the Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for Phases 6 and 7 of the East Beach Redevelopment Plan. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
You know, in the development of East Beach, I'd wonder what had happened to City Beach. I didn't know how far Ellis was going to go with his comments when he talked about segregation and desegregation. But probably one of the most volatile issues that this city has ever had in our history had to do with City Beach. There is records that show that the population of, black population of Norfolk had no beachfront that they could enjoy during the summer when it was hot because Norfolk's beaches were segregated. And blacks were not permitted to go to Norfolk's beachfront. And the city council and a group of African-Americans led by PB Young had this big discussion. And this became a very, very volatile issue. And so, Norfolk decided to buy, I think it might have been, I don't know, between seven and 13 miles of beachfront from one of the local railroads to provide beachfronts for African-Americans. And I just think it's, as opposed to just looking at this and saying there's no address or looking at it and not even mentioning the fact that, how historical City Beach was to Norfolk, that we do recognize the fact that, and some, one of the history books that we have around here would indicate what a volatile issue it was. But Norfolk did acquiesce, the city council did, and allowed a beach to be developed for African-Americans, and this was it. And my only thing is, I don't know what the structure is going to be in terms of the expansion of East Beach, but I would like to see some type of designation, at least showing where City Beach was. And I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Wibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
R1. R1 is an ordinance accepting $400,000 from the Virginia Port Authority and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $400,000 and authorizing the expenditure of $100,000 from previously appropriated funds as a local cash match for capital port improvements at Nauticus. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
Dr. Wibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
R2. An ordinance approving the conveyance of a certain parcel of property located in Norfolk designated as a portion of the old City Beach to the Norfolk, to the City of Norfolk by Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Riddick said. We had talked about this about a year and a half ago, about putting some form of a historical marker in that area designating what that beach used to be. And I think the community would be supportive of it as well. So, if there's some way that we can look into how that happens, we should start that process now because it might take a couple of years for it to get going. So, aye.
Dr. Wibley.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
That's all, Mr. President.
Okay, that concludes the formal portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.